Call the meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, January 17th. Commission Chambers to order. Roll call, please.
Nemic?
Here.
Benajak?
Here.
Mallett?
Here.
Herrick?
Here.
Radke?
Here.
Poyer?
Present.
Begit?
Here. Let's rise for the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, may come before you this afternoon, asking once again that you bless this session of the county commission, be with this board this day, and guide them so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. Amen.
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 The citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on one side, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you have the minutes from 12:13, 2022. Move to approve?
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Citizen inputs. We're going to allow five minutes for each citizen, and you don't have to sign if you don't want to. Any citizen inputs? One more call for citizen input. Thank you. I did want to appoint Ms. Amber Johnson as our parliamentarian, who she will accept the job. She's done it before.
Sure.
Tough decision. I think there's extra pay with that. Not.
I don't think so.
Okay. We have a presentation. I don't see Mr. Charles Campbell here, but we're going to go ahead and read it, I guess, and we can present it to him later because the date is February, February 3rd, so we won't be meeting before then, so we'll have, well, first of all, I need to have a motion to receive this proclamation.
So move.
Support. All right. And then we'll have the, we'll have the clerk read it then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Resolution by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas on February 3rd, 1943, four United States Army chaplains aboard the US AT Dorchester heroically gave their lives in the process of saving others as their ship was torpedoed and sank, and whereas when the supply of life jackets ran out on their sinking ship, Lieutenant George Fox, a Methodist minister, Lieutenant Alexander Good, a Jewish rabbi, Lieutenant Clark Polling, a Dutch Reform minister, and Lieutenant John Washington, a Roman Catholic priest, selflessly gave up their life jackets to those who had none, and whereas according to witnesses who survived the attack, the four chaplains linked arms, sang hymns, and offered prayers as they went down with their ship. And whereas more than 600 members of our nation's military tragically passed away that day, including the four chaplains, making it known as the second worst sea disaster of World War II, and whereas Congress attempted to confer the Medal of Honor on the chaplains, but was prevented by strict guidelines, and whereas instead Congress authorized a one-time posthumous special medal of heroism given by former President Eisenhower in 1961 with the intention of having the same weight and importance as the Medal of Honor, therefore be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners encourages and supports the observance of Four Chaplains Day and is honored to hereby designate February 3rd, 2023, as Four Chaplains Day in Bay County.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Pardon?
Point of order, I believe that it was made as a motion to receive. Could we amend that to a motion to adopt and present?
Adopt, okay.
Correct.
Okay. Support. All those in favor of that. Say aye. So we will get this to Mr. Campbell. He is a practicing minister. I know he does a lot of funerals, so it may be that he got called away unexpectedly, but we will get this to him then. All right, we have the Kaukaulan River watershed. Glenn Rowley and the president of the watershed.
Thank you, sir. I left a handout for everyone. I'm going to be referring to this a little bit. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Executive, and Department Heads, I'm Glenn Rowley. I'm the supervisor of beautiful Bangor Township. Joining me today, I have the President and the Vice President of the Kaukaulan River Watershed Association. It's been almost a year since I've had the pleasure to speak with you, and I see we have a couple of new faces, so welcome. If you have not met me, I'm the one that is often on the wrong end of the, of a news camera during flooding events, which is a topic for which I return to you today. High waters in recent years combined with heavy rain have created a perfect storm for flooding, pardon my pun. In fact, studies by ECT Engineering have estimated that 21,000 cubic tons of sediment will enter the Kaukaulan River after each, each year after rain events, ultimately ending up at the mouth of the Kaukaulan River. Please see page three of your shock and awe handout. Another issue is with floating debris, which can cause damming at the base of the bridges. The last few years, we have felt the full wrath of flooding events, so much in fact we were able to spearhead a flooding symposium with local leaders, state representatives, emergency management personnel, the US Army Corps of Engineers, Congressman Kildee's office, and Senator Debbie Stabenow herself in attendance. During that meeting, we asked the senator for assistance at the federal level, and she delivered. I'm very pleased to announce in the fall of 2021, the US Army Corps of Engineers alerted me to the fact that $570,000 was earmarked in President Biden's budget for flood control on the Kaukaulan River. This is huge news, and I'm very excited for what we can do with this. This will incorporate a few phases. It's going to remove the old railroad bridge supports, and it's also going to dredge the edge of the, the end of the river where the sediment collects and can cause flooding. This will greatly lessen the peril of flooding, and not just for the residents of beautiful Bangor Township, but the entire county, as it infects all of our residents in some capacity. That's the good news. The bad news is, for the Water Resource Development Act of 1986, work performed on a waterway by the US Army Corps of Engineers requires a 50% cost share. After engineering and development work, the cost sharing is going to be approximately With numerous major drains discharging in the Kaukaulan River, I reached out to the Drain Commissioner's office. He said his office cannot help with this type of a project. Bangor Township's ARPA funds were just over $1 million, and they were used to replace much-needed drinking water lines. And asking the residents that live along the waterway for a special assessment doesn't seem fair for something that is needed by the entire county. I ask you to look at the watershed map that you have on the front, and I brought one of my own. You can see that it is quite large. The Kaukaulan River watershed encompasses almost all of Bay County. In fact, it covers 250 square miles. Now, I'm going to use this funnel to help illustrate what the watershed is. The entire top of this funnel is the watershed, and the bottom is going to be where all the proposed work will happen. Imagine if you would, if we were to cover two-thirds of this funnel at the bottom. You can imagine what would happen here. Now, obviously, we're dealing with some serious scale issues, but if you bear with me, please, and turn to page four of your handout. The width of the channel should be a distance of 230 feet. As you can see by your illustration, it's now approximately 80 feet, one-third. That is exactly what's happening at the mouth of the river. Now, please imagine if you would, if I had some debris that we just add into here. What's going to happen is most likely going to get stuck. It's going to cause an obstruction. This is exactly what's happening with the abandoned bridge supports. That's on page five, that illustration, and I'll bring to your attention that there are three of those there. The Watershed Association was able to secure grant, some grant money through Bangor, Monitor, and Kaukaulan Townships a few years ago. They were able to remove hundreds of dead ash trees from that river, but there's still many more. Should one of these become lodged at the base of the bridge, flooding can happen in a matter of hours. Now, I've used this funnel to give just a few examples of what can happen with flooding, but sadly, we have already seen firsthand what can happen and what did happen, all right? The flooding is devastating, and it causes a huge financial impact on our residents. Now you have the opportunity to reduce the peril of it. Please don't take my word for it or the Watershed Association's word for just how important this project is. The President of the United States of America included this in his budget. It is a major priority for all of Bay County. So please commit the $564,300 to satisfy the statutory match per the Water Resources Development Act of 1986 and help prevent flooding disasters. Please commit to the safety and the well-being of all the residents of Bay County. I thank you for the time that you've invested in me here, and I'd also like to thank Executive Barsha and Laura Olgar for all of their assistance in working with the Army Corps of Engineers on this project. But lastly, I thank you for the opportunity to speak here and for your consideration in funding this important project. Thank you.
Any questions for Glenn Rowley, Chair?
I have a question and a comment.
Barsha?
I just want to thank Supervisor Rowley for his excellent presentation, and also thank you for your patience. You've been working on this for about a year, and I was at that meeting with Senator Stabenow at the Mayor Area Water Works, I believe, right? And as, as Glenn points out, the watershed in the Kaukaulan River serves probably two-thirds of Bay County. And, and we, we know that when we have a strong northwest wind and our lake level is up, that a lot of water gets pushed upstream, up the Kaukaulan River, jeopardizing all the residents, residential homes, as well as everything, as he pointed out on the map, all of the farmers who get stuck with flooding in their farm fields and, and the number of negative consequences that happen when we have flooding. It was just 2017, I think, we had almost four homes, I think, in Cathy's district that I think collapsed into one of our drains because things were so backed up and that drain hadn't been, hadn't been maintained since the 1950s. But we, we do have a flooding issue from time to time. Glenn, thank you for being proactive in approaching the county, and I understand we have a meeting with the Corps of Engineers tomorrow to hopefully assure them that we want them to hold onto that match because that's, that's critical. But thank you for all of the research and work and, and the cause that you've championed throughout your time as the Supervisor of Bangor Township.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all that you do.
Any other questions? Mr. Herrick is there. So the spoils, what do you do with the spoils?
That is where the, the engineers with the Army Corps of Engineer will have to decide what is the best practice. If we're really lucky, the spoils can be taken from a barge-to-channel island just outside of the Saginaw River, where it's already a confined disposal facility. It's quick, it's easy, it's close, and it's very inexpensive. If they deem that it's, it's full and there's no more room, then we'll have to go to Plan B, where it's trucked elsewhere. That can be a little bit more expensive. There's a lot of engineering and a lot of homework that would have to be done before things actually happen, but in order to do that, they need to have a commitment before they start the engineering of this.
Is there no place in Bangor Township for it? I mean, where they built those dykes up or?
There, there is not. What would, what would happen is most likely the soil will be tested, and they're probably going to find something in it that's probably a little dangerous, as we found from the Dioxin cleanup all over, so it's probably going to have to go to a confined disposal facility, and we do not have one in Bangor Township. We'd have to go somewhere else.
So that's another added cost, correct?
Potentially. Once again, nothing has been done. There's been no engineering. There's been no soil testing. This project is right now ready to launch, but no pre-homework has been done.
Anybody else? So let me ask, yeah. So how do, like, like, if I ask, if I go to Frankenhouse Township, if I go to Portsmouth Township, how do I ask them to become part of this? Because, I mean, you know what I'm saying? They have no skin in the game. So, you know, like, I kind of go, you know, I like to run with my constituents and see how they feel about certain things that we do. And how would, how would, how would you recommend I present it to them? As we just say, we're part of the watershed? Is that, is that our town?
What I would recommend, as I, as I stated, this is a, this is not a Bangor Township problem. We just happen to be at the end of the funnel. I'd recommend going to the Drain Commissioner's website and look at the major drains in Bay County, and you will find the majority of them will go into the Kaukaulan River. And Drain Commissioners have done a fabulous job as far as being able to have water drained from our county into this river. It has become a superhighway, so much in fact, we're now at the, at the downside of that. Some of the, the new locations they have, we're bringing water all the way from out as Williams Township going up to Pen Conning. We get into some of the farm fields and it drains so quickly, we have a lot of that settlement that just ends up down at the bottom of that funnel, and they can't go out. So to talk to your constituents, this is something that will affect every resident of Bay County in some way or another. We can talk about slow drains. You can talk about how the water backs up out of storm drains, just because there's nowhere for it to go.
I, I know what you're saying, but I would say even, you know, where I live in the south of the Bay City, that people have a tough time buying into that theory with, you know, because with Saginaw, Saginaw River runs right through the middle of town, you know, that where we are, and even where Casey is in her, her district, and even, even where Dennis is at, at Essexville, it's a little bit different, you know, but I know what you're saying, but I guess, I guess I got, I guess I have to talk to people first, but I, I understand the plight of Bangor Township and, and the Kaukaulan River, but this guy, I think it's got a little ways to go, you know? If people say this is what we want, then, then this is what we want, you know? But that's, I'm kind of, I guess that's kind of the way I'm looking at it right now. I just have a hard time associating with it because it's really, it really helps, it's nice, it helps out the people on the river, you know, a lot. I get that. And that, I think the question's going to be, what are they doing? What are, what are they do, what's their part in this besides enjoying it and having their property values go up? So, and, you know, I don't want to, I'm not going to, I don't, I don't want to debate you on this. I just want to tell you what, what I think is going to happen when we go talk to the people in my, in the townships and, and city and see what they have to say, just so, you know, to prepare for what's going to come next. And hopefully, you know, it'll work out, but I don't know. Anyone else?
If I could make one remark, Vaughn? I was remiss in not acknowledging the tremendous work that the Kaukaulan River Property Owners Association does to keep the Kaukaulan River flowing, and I know Terry Watson, the former supervisor, and I for years would go out and, and at the various points, wear trees and lawn furniture and everything that somehow ended up in the Kaukaulan River. That whole Saturday where people come out and work hard to clean up the river and get the debris out to facilitate the, you know, the flow of the water to the bay, we really appreciate that. I, I meant to say that, and then I got into commenting about Glenn's work on this issue, and, and I know that the volunteers still come out, have breakfast at castaways, and go out and put in a whole day's work retrieving, you know, old tires and trees, trees that have come down into the river and limbs and all kinds of debris and other, even lawn furniture we've taken out sometimes, so. But thank you for, you know, appreciating what the Kaukaulan River means to, to the county and especially to Bangor Township. Thanks.
Last thing. Last thing. Ask if anybody else has anything for them. Okay. Go ahead. I just want to say, Kaukaulan River is a great resource, you know? You know, as, I did those things when I was a kid that I was supposed to do, you know, jump off the river, a bridge, jump off the, off the bridge down State Park Drive, and that, you know, it's a great place to fish. I just, I, you know, and I just want to make sure we get everything covered the right way before we agree to do something like this, and we, you know, I think that's, I think that's the biggest thing, you know? I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against what you're doing. I just want to make sure that it's the right thing to do.
Actually, one last comment, if I may, where Mr. Barsha, you mentioned our, our old name with the Property Owners Association. We changed that to the Kaukaulan River Watershed Association only because we found so many people that were using that river. We're not necessarily the ones that live there, and I'll use, for example, the, the pirate paddle that we have, that will bring in hundreds and hundreds of people from actually all over the county and the state will come and participate. It's a, it's a fabulous waterway, and this is not just for the residents. Thank you all very much for your time.
I have a question.
Please.
So the money, the federal money, I know it was going to run out, but then they got an extension, so where are we at timeframe-wise, federal money?
Federal money, where we were at luckily with the help from Mr. Barsha reaching out to the Army Corps of Engineers, they extended our deadline, which was December 31st last year, to, we're going to find out tomorrow at about 1 o'clock exactly what we will say, and they may very well say, you've sat on this for a year and you've done nothing, and the money is now gone. I really hope that's not the case, but I'd like to think that we can talk to them tomorrow and say, hey, please continue with this. It's, it's that important of a project.
Keep us updated.
Very good. Thank you for all that you do.
Anything else? Motion to receive would be in order.
Support.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So I'm going to go out of the order of business a little. Reverend Campbell, I know he's a busy man. He probably has something going on, but he's here now. So first of all, do you want to say anything about, we've read the resolution already, but if you want to say anything further about the, the four chaplains, you can come up with a microphone there.
Well, thank you very much for your consideration first, and when it comes down to these four chaplains, it just shows how you can go across the line. We had a Roman Catholic priest, a Jewish rabbi, a Methodist minister, and a Dutch reform, and they all went together to save lives that very day, and they saved more than 230 lives that would have perished on the Dorchester. The Dorchester, if you decide to go online and read any more about what I just said, you'll be so surprised. That was a World War II transport with over 900 men on it. Now, you'd say 230 doesn't sound like much. Well, if the four chaplains wouldn't have did nothing, nobody would have survived. They're the ones that opened the area where the life jackets were and started handing them out, to the point where they literally took the life jackets off their necks and gave it to four more individuals. One individual that was going back to his room to get his gloves, the one chaplain said, no, sir, here, take mine, I have two pairs. That man lived, and he lived to tell that story, and yeah, I get a little emotional because when I think about it, the freedom we enjoy today is the freedom those folks fought for in World War II. So I thank you for all your consideration for this special service. This will be the third year we've done this, and we're inviting the public to come out. It's at 12 noon at the American Legion Post 700, just around the corner. We're going to use the hall room, and we're hoping for a good turnout. We'll see what happens. COVID kind of botched the last couple of years, but we still did it because it's a story that needs telling. The actual day in question is February 3rd, that nationally is recognized as Chaplains' Day, so.
I'll come down and give it to you. Do you want to come forward a little bit here?
Thank you.
Done, signed by myself, and then the Executive and our county clerk. So there you go. Thank you very much, Mr. Herrick.
Reverend Towns, thank you for all you do. I know I go to so many veterans' events, I know Carol's here, but you, you make almost everything, man.
I try.
I'll tell you, you, you take your responsibilities at Chaplain, to the veterans of Bay County very seriously, and thanks for your advocacy and your tireless, you know, dedication to attending as many events as you possibly can.
Thank you very much, sir.
He's also a politician too, so we won't hold that against him. We have Personnel Director listing of authorized department heads. Pointed by County Executive Barsha. Motion to receive would be in order. So move.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have the City of Bay City, application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for 966 East Midland Street, Bay City. So.
Support.
Discussion? To receive, yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Ways and Means, Mr. Commissioner Bennett.
Mr. Chairman, we had a few of those resolutions. First one, number 202301, for the 2324 Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency Veteran Service Grant.
So, well, you're moving it. I'm going to support it.
Okay. Any discussion?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And continue.
Okay. Our next one, number 202302, Chair, I mean, Child-Parent Legal Representation Grant for a four-year, 2023, Holy Court.
You have to move it.
So move it.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next one, number 202303, Government-Spent Agreement. Seeking approval to enter into a one-year agreement with GovSpend with the Automatic Renewal Clause, finance purchasing. So move.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the last one, number, number 202304, Payables. Move to approve.
Support.
Discussion? Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel and Human Services, Chairman Kathy Nemic.
Resolution number 2023-05 is for new full-time Titus clerk to position in the board office of the Board of Commissioners. Need to adopt this resolution?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-06, this is for legal secretary vacancy in Prosecutor's Office. Need to adopt this resolution?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 202307, Assistant Prosecutor Vacancy. Need to adopt this resolution?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-08, vacancies in the 911 Dispatch, Department on Aging, and Finance Personnel. Need to adopt this resolution?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Board of Commissioners, I guess that would be Mr. Herrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring you Resolution Number 2023-09, Reports of the County Executive for December. I move this resolution.
Support.
And discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And Resolution Number 2023-10, Meals on Wheels Home Modification Grant for Veterans. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? I'm going to ask Beth to come up and talk about this a little bit. I think we need to get the word out. We did talk to our veterans in our last meeting about it.
Well, right now, Bay County has about 2,800 veterans that will be eligible for this program. It is a home modification grant. They're giving eight away under the Home Depot Foundation through the Meals on Wheels Program. So you have to be a Meals on Wheels member, which Department on Aging is, and you have to be, have their little sticker everywhere and get the word out. So this grant is due on Thursday, which we are almost done preparing, and it should serve up to, I should say, up to, it should serve at least 10 individuals. It's $25,000 grant. That's the minimum that we can do. We're hoping with funds we can do more, but it can put in grab bars, it can put in chair, um, chair rails, it can put in showers, it can help with the thresholds for their doors, it can help with anything that is going to make it easier on their life in their home to get around their house.
Any questions? Having, having some of those grab bars put in my bathroom a few years ago, they're very handy. Getting older falls are probably the number one reason for elderly people who end up in nursing homes or have other complications, so.
Yes, and please do not put a suction cup grab bar on your wall. That's just a bit of advice. They don't stay sometimes.
Okay.[1778.91] Any questions for Beth? All right, I'll call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have the reports of county officials, Mr. Barsha.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to report. I've been participating a lot in our two meetings today, but I do want to say at the next meeting in February, we should have an update on the latest discussions we've had regarding the Combined Health Center that we'd like to establish. And then also, a meeting this week, tomorrow, on plans for the annual shelter. The renovation, or new, we're told that to build new would be the same cost as renovating. So, and we could use the space at the old shelter, which used to be a mosquito control building, was never designed to be an annual shelter. However, we will report back at the next meeting, the full board, on progress on those two fronts.
Thank you. We do have our millage. We appreciate all those millage votes that we had. Save the general fund. Motion to receive, County Exec's report.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unfinished business, so we forgot to do something at the beginning. I have a new item, sort of unfinished and sort of new. Board rules, I presented some at the last meeting. We had some discussion on it lively. I got some pushback from several people, so I've modified them a bit. So this is just, I'm going to read this for you, and then we vote on it next full board meeting, next month. So there's been some modifications. One was the dropping of the, eliminating that second meeting of the month, because the Terrain Commissioner talked to me and some other people talked to me about it, so it didn't work out good for their reporting and payroll and stuff. So we're going to keep all the same meetings. Ways and Means, the first one, Personnel, Human Services, number two, Full Board, number three. We can have special meetings if we need to on the fourth one, hopefully not two. So I'm going to read what I have, and it should be on your desk also. So it's changed to Article 3, the Order of Business, to read as follows. And this is the agenda. One item I noticed in here, agenda approval, if that would have been on, I probably would have remembered to approve the agenda and add the new item in, so we're going to have that on in the future. I know Commissioner, from the first ward, had it in her Ways and Means agenda to remember if we got any additions to the agenda or changes. So we have the call to order, these are all still the same, the highlighted ones are in red, roll call number two, invocation, pledge of allegiance. In invocation, pledge of allegiance, we talked about that a bit before. Committee chairs have that option, if they want to have invocation and pledge before their meetings, that's their call. Minutes of the preceding meetings. Then we add Agenda Approval, number six. And then Citizen Input, petitions and communications, reports and resolutions of standing committees, reports of county officials. We added Commissioner Comments. I've been to a lot of township meetings, and they usually have a session at the end for the commissioners to have some input or report on committees that they're on, so we're going to add that in. Unfinished business, new business. I added public input at the end. I know, I appreciate it because I get the township meetings late sometimes. It's nice to have that, that public input at the end of the meeting. And I have had some people say, why do you meet at 4:00? Why don't you meet at 5:00 or 6:00? Well, we can have those people come in if they want to come in late and have their public input at the end of the meeting. Miscellaneous, announcements, closed session if requested, and recess or adjournment are all the same. So those will be up for a vote then, and if you have any other input before then. Then Article 16, got to remember my Roman numerals here, appointments. I'm recommending, in addition to Article 16, appointments, and I'll read the whole thing. In order to receive consideration for appointments, such requests may be submitted in writing to the Bay County Board of Commissioners prior to the date of appointment, or may be nominated by a commissioner from the floor the day of the meeting, but the commissioner must have a written request from the individual stating that he or she would accept the nomination. This is for board appointments, the process, that's been in there. And I added, the board coordinator will offer the applicants the opportunity to speak in public comment during a committee or board meeting sometime prior to the vote of the commission on the appointment. So they can do it at that meeting, or they could come into a committee meeting before that to speak. Sometimes they have conflicts with time and stuff. So that gives them an opportunity to speak to us. It's good to hear from people directly too, versus just an application forum. So I'm laying these on your table for the next meeting. Do we need a motion at all on this, or just to receive it?
It will be a motion to lay on the table and refer to the next full board meeting. Before you do that, if you could have the clerk, you did read the exact language of the second change.
Yep.
But if you could have the clerk read the entire paragraph of the first change, word for word, as it's going to be placed in the board rules.
The first one, the agenda?
Then you can vote, yes.
The agenda one, I have it here.
I have it too, Bob.
You have it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. Excuse me. Article 3, Order of Business. In the transaction of business, the following order shall be observed. One, call to order. Two, roll call. Three, invocation. Four, pledge of allegiance. Five, minutes of preceding meetings. Six, agenda approval. Seven, citizen input. Eight, petitions and communications. Nine, reports and resolutions of standing committees. Ten, reports of county officials. Eleven, commissioner comments. Twelve, unfinished business. Thirteen, new business. Fourteen, public input. Fifteen, miscellaneous. Sixteen, announcements. Seventeen, closed session if requested. And eighteen, recess or adjournment. Is that right?
Yep. And then the, I read the whole one, the second one.
You did read the whole one, the second one.
So I guess I need a motion to have it laid on the table for a vote at the next full board meeting.
I will do that.
Go ahead. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed and received for next meeting. Let's see, we have more stuff here. Any miscellaneous?
What about miscellaneous?
I, no.
That's what I mentioned, in case somebody missed it, on TV, they talked about the, our transit guy was on TV yesterday talking about the tolls on the bridges and how much it would be for our buses to use, like he mentioned a number of $200,000 a year just for buses that use toll bridges a year, and how they were going to try to reroute all the buses through Lafayette and Vets, which is, you know, and how they tried to deal with the bridge authority, to, of course, to no avail, as we all know. They've been pretty stringent in what they've been doing, and I don't think, it just don't seem very business-friendly to county government at all, you know? And it's too bad. I mean, I think there's a way for everybody to get along, but I guess, you know, sometimes when they're in the profit-making business, they can take it a little bit too far, you know? I mean, they're, it's almost like they're trying to gouge people as it is, because when I travel, you know, down even a hollow turnpike in through Chicago, it doesn't cost as much as it's going to cost for people to go across these bridges. And it's kind of a shame, but maybe in time, things will get worked out. And I don't know, it doesn't look very good right now, but hopefully, you know, like I said, the bus situation is pretty bad, as it is with all the county vehicles that we, as we discussed before. So hopefully, things will get better. I don't know if they can get any worse, but hopefully they'll get better, you know? So for all the public, this, anybody who has to cross, you know, it can be teachers, doctors, it doesn't matter, you know? They're all going to use them some, you know, they want to use them, but that's kind of a steep price to pay for it, just to go, I might start a ferry service, I'm thinking about it.
Plus, we have a few vehicles also, Mr. Barsha.
Yeah. I'd just like to say that Beth, Herrick and I met last Tuesday morning, Beth, with Bay City Bridge Partners, and explained the plight of the county and what kind of cost would be involved in the proposed tolling schedule. And because we have a lot of large vehicles, the heavier and the bigger the vehicle is, the higher the toll, going as high as $1,250 per crossing one way on both bridges. So we explained that to them and how Shawna, while Raven has, and her department have analyzed the costs of the county, between $500,000 and $600,000 per year. We did explain to them too, why Bay County couldn't play a role in providing the revenue to repair the bridges. Bay County, that we operate here, you all know the legislative branch of, we get no federal or state gasoline tax. That, under Public Act 151 in Michigan, one-third goes to MDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation, one-third goes to Bay County, or excuse me, road commissions in their respective counties, and one-third goes to cities. So I know one city commission president suggested M Live, and was quoted as saying, the county could have helped us simply by writing a $100 million check to repair the two bridges, you know? And, you know, we would have to close all county operations down for three years, you know, to do that, lay off every single employee, shut the jail, shut the courts down, shut all the county functions down, and that simply is not tenable to help the city. So I see down the road, I see real concerns by small businesses that I'm talking to too. If you want to get a pizza delivered, it'd be extra $8 on top of the tip and on top of the cost of the pizza if you have to cross the river. More than numerous vehicles, especially odd-sized vehicles and larger vehicles that are owned by businesses that are commercial vehicles, commercial and municipal, at very, very high rates. And so we did express, in Beth's department, 55 vehicles, all large vehicles. We deliver 1,200 meals a day to homebound citizens throughout Bay County. And a lot of our vehicles will cross the bridges multiple times in a single day. So, yep, I agree with Commissioner Herrick, you know, it's going to be an issue going down. Hopefully, at some point, something can be adjusted, but we'll see. So far, there's not been really much recognition of our concern, I guess. But we did have a, you know, an informative discussion, and so, thanks.
So on April 1st, when we start getting a lot of phone calls, and we have to explain that we're not city commissioners, can we request a standard script that we can express what we want to express in a tactful way?
You know, at some point, we may want to take our message to all Bay County residents because there's a lot of confusion. A lot of people do say, Jim, why didn't the county fix, you know? And I, why didn't they, why didn't you guys fix the bridges? And I told them, you know, we don't have that kind of money. We get no federal and state gas tax. A lot of people don't know, the Bay County Road Commission doesn't have any county employees at it. They're a separate entity overseen by three road commissioners elected for six-year terms. And they receive money from federal and state gas tax revenue that pays for primary and secondary roads. MDOT pays for the state highway system, and then the cities basically are on the revenue stream to maintain their bridges and city residential streets. So we, we offered, I know we met several times at City Hall, usually closed-door meetings because that's what the city preferred. But I know our Corporation Council advised them that they couldn't sell the bridges, and they were of a different opinion. But it turned out she was right, so the city has a contract for 99 years to lease the bridges from the city. And then the tolling contract is for a period of 75 years. And what another concern we all have is that each year, the tolls could escalate because there's a cost of living, a COLA adjustment factor on an annual basis. So hopefully, that, you know, if they get too high and people quit using them, I'm sure they'll have to come down and be adjusted, but, you know.
Just brainstorming, just brainstorming here. We have a new legislature, you know, we've tried to get the Wilder Road, Independence Bridge declared a state highway. I don't know if there's any interest in re-investigating that.
Back in the late '70s, it was one of the first bills they introduced as a state representative when I was elected in 1976. And every legislator since then has attempted to do it, and every governor, Democrat and Republican opposed MDOT taking over the Independence Bridge. And even in Congress, I got it through the U.S. House to connect the M15 on our master, on the Michigan's master plan, from M15 in Trumbull all the way to Euclid, I believe at the time, instead of 75, because that's 138. Technically, that's a state highway. So all we needed was that little span to be connected, and it would have been a state bridge. However, at the time, Governor Engler and MDOT became aware of the change, and Senator Abraham, Spencer Abraham, removed the provision in the U.S. Senate. But I think we've all been sympathetic to Bay City and the cost of operating the bascule bridges. The ups and downs for all the recreational watercraft, as well as the freight traffic that we see. But it's been a long time problem, but, you know, we've just been unable, as a delegation of legislators from the city, to ever get it resolved. I know Senator Green worked on it, but that was a very short-term, one-time amount of money for the city. So sympathetic to them, but again, you know, we, I advised them when Commissioner Chairman Durantcheck and I spoke, if you could be patient and wait, at some point, there will be a federal infrastructure bill passed. Now, Michigan, the state of Michigan, has $10 billion for road and bridge repair. And let me remind you, billions, a thousand million. So that's a lot of money that we have now sitting in Michigan to help communities repair their bridges and roads and streets.
Probably not for private.
But, you know, the city commission, I had thought about going to the last city commission meeting again to express my concerns, but I was told it's unanimous, and their minds were made up, the votes were cast prior to the meeting, and it turned out to be unanimous vote again, so. We gave our advice.
We're just looking for a statement to read to our constituents that won't make it any more upset than they are already.
Yeah, we may have. A lot of confusion between the roles of the city and the county. A lot of voters don't recognize the differences, I guess, where we oversee the entire county, 14 townships and three cities, and Bay City is city, and it was their decision to make, it was their asset. It'd be like us making a decision on renovations to our neighbor's home. Actually, you have to go to the person that owns the infrastructure, owns the home, and you don't, you know? We did offer our advice, but it wasn't taken.
And just, you will be getting calls from people in the city that you have to explain to them that you're, you know, try to help them. I mean, try to be sympathetic and say, maybe you should talk to this person, or try to refer them to the right person that may be in their district. Anything else? I have one thing. We all got the Community Information Exchange. They're having a webcast, a online seminar on, I have it here somewhere, somewhere in February, that you're asked to sign up for, February 9th at 1:30. It should be in your mailbox. Looks interesting. I know Joel Strauss was involved with it, and some of the other community people, so we can have a Community Information Exchange, so we don't have all those rumors out there, maybe. So I'd encourage you to sign up for that. Pictures afterwards, don't leave right away. I don't, oh, I got to do some more, sorry. I'm not done yet. We have appointments coming up in March. We have Bay Airac Behavioral Health Authority, four three-year terms are up, the names of the incumbents are there. Region 7 Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, one three-year term is up. June Library Board, one five-year term. October Land Bank Authority, two three-year terms. Bay County Department of Human Services, one three-year term. Jury Commission, one six-year term. December, Bay County Veterans Affairs Committee, one four-year term. And then December, Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms for districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. And do we need a closed session?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
And a motion to adjourn is always in order.
Motion adjourned.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.